August 20th meeting of the Scott County Board of Commissioners. Sorry for the delay. We had a workshop prior to this meeting that just ended. So please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in whose book with liberty and justice thrall. Thank you. We do have an amendment to the agenda. We have a report from our good friends at MICA. We didn't mean to leave you off the agenda. We just knew you were coming and felt that we will be doing that right after recognition of interested citizens. So are there any other amendments to the agenda? I moved in second and do approve the amended agenda with MICA presentation at number 4.5. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. I don't think I hit the gavel to begin the meeting, so we're begun. The minutes from the August 6th board meeting have been posted and distributed. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Madam Chair, I'll move approval to those minutes.
Moved in second and do approve the August 6, 2024 meeting minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. On to recognition of interested citizens. This is an opportunity on the agenda for anyone to approach the board on an item not on the agenda today. If you're here for that part of the agenda, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. Up to five minutes per person, per topic. All right. Thank you. Everybody's here today for something not on the agenda. So we will move on to a report from our good friends at MICA. Matt Mossman is going to come up and get us started. Thanks for joining us today, Matt, and Nancy, and Steve. Always good to see you and excited to hear from you.
Good morning. Chair Weckman-Brucki and Commissioners Matt Mossman with the Minnesota Intercounty Association. I am hoping to be having lunch with one of my mentors from undergraduate school in a couple of weeks. And this reminds me of the, I don't even remember the name of the technology, but the slides we used to look at when I was in college. So I think I'm going to know how to work this system very well. I appreciate the time. Minnesota Intercounty Association very much supports Scott Counties, appreciates Scott Counties' membership over many years. And I want to thank Commissioner Weckman-Brucki, Chair Brucki, and Commissioner Ulrich for your service on the MICA board. We really appreciate the insights you always bring to helping set our priorities and agenda at the Capitol on your behalf. So I am going to talk today about the, and in the interest of time, I'm going to partly accelerate and partly because at this point post-session, you have a lot of information, I think, already about what did happen in the 2024 legislative session. And then Steve and Nancy will come up as well. One of the ways I think that's really important to understand the 2024 legislative session, or sort of put it in context, is that it was after the 2023 session. And what I mean by that is so much happened in the 2023 legislative session in terms of new state initiatives. And I really appreciate the opportunity to participate and attend your meeting, your work group meeting earlier. I think a lot of those are still having ramifications for counties in community corrections and probation services, in employment law and health and human services, and certainly in transportation also. So the 2024 session, even though from my perspective, over the 20 or 30 years of doing this work, we went into the legislative session with a pretty healthy, certainly one-time surplus in budget resources. There was a lot of concern at the Capitol around what the longer-term trajectory of the state budget looked like in preserving budget stability. And so there was much less appetite for new spending and new commitments in the 2024 legislative session relative to 2023. And so that really shaped the decision-making. This sheet is the one number sheet that I put up for you. And also in our presentation today, while we talk about what happened in 2024, I'm going to go off-script a little bit, knowing that you know some of that already and sort of we're already thinking about, as you're already thinking about, the 2025 session. I think this chart helps with both. In the orange at the right-hand side, you can see why things, there was concern going into legislative session in 2023. Even though there was a $3.7 billion surplus for the '24-'25 biennium, the projections for '26-'27 are that the revenues that will come in in that period of time, that $64.85 billion, is less than the expending that is expected to happen under current state law program requirements of $66.4 million. We think of that as a structural imbalance. We just had Minnesota Management and Budget Commissioner attend our meeting last week of our Board of Directors. And she was reminding us that this coming November will be the first time that the state puts out a projection for '28 and '29. And so as we go into the 2025 session, this picture here will really guide where we, what the dynamics of the '25 legislative session are like. But from what we can tell right now, that it's very likely to be this sort of circumstance. Some one-time resources upfront right now, but potentially a more moderate challenged budget, if you will, in the out-years going forward, which has ramifications for how much new permanent funding changes, ongoing funding changes the legislature will consider. All of that said, we took priorities to the counties. We being counties, the Minnesota Intercounty Association and partners to the Capitol, one of those was certainly getting solutions on the tax-forfeited land settlement fund in particular, as well as the state law change related to the Supreme Court's decision ruling part of Minnesota's tax-forfeited land statute unconstitutional. There needed to be a fix for that. So you can see that while the legislature spent $424 million of mostly one-time new resources this last legislative session, fully a quarter of that, $120, pardon me, $109 million was allocated to this solution that we needed at the county level. Want to be really clear to public that's listening, that's not money that was going to counties. That's money going to individuals that county taxpayers might have otherwise had to shoulder if the state had not stepped up for this retroactive settlement for a change in state law. So again, though, the session ended with $3.3 billion on the bottom line and $3.3 billion in reserves. And we think that that one-time balance is going to continue forward. I already talked about the tax, the Tyler settlement in concept. This was in your, what's been handed out to you. In your slide gives a summary of the settlement context that count, and the requirements on counties. That's already been passed along to you. So I think you and your staff and administrator familiar are already familiar with those requirements. And then, of course, there was also a whole set of policy changes. I would just really want to thank the authors that did great work, Representative Sandra Feist and Senator Bonnie Westland. And then on the money side, Senator Grant Hostchild and Representative Liz Lagarde, who carried that legislation. And I'm happy to answer any questions on the tax-forfeited settlement, as you might have. As we look to 2020, so there was also, the both House and Senate had a tax bill, which we follow closely. That's oftentimes where we see local government aids, county program aid, housing aid, and homeless prevention aid. A number of the aid programs that support the work of county government end up in the tax bill, as well as property tax law changes, obviously. So there were both changes. SCORE increases also been housed in the tax bill. There were increases, one-time increases in a number of programs that you can see on the screen that both the House and Senate proposed last session. Those didn't happen. So in the end of the day, there was only a handful of things, mostly related to state taxes, like the childcare tax credit modifications and some programs up on the Iron Range that were included, that were agreed upon by the House and Senate. The one in the middle there and the last two are things that we will really want to follow closely during the upcoming legislative session. There is a robust conversation going on about how local governments get funded. And part of that has now been what has, what's the access to the local sales tax base and how to make sure that that is equitable across the state. Both the House and Senate had a proposal in their bills that would have allowed local governments, without having to go to the legislature each time for a special law change, to impose a local sales tax with a local voter referendum. There were many differences between the House and the Senate, both in terms of what local governments could use that for. Some difference of perspective as to whether or not it should be able to be used for public safety and community corrections and other jails and those types of facilities. And then also whether, how equity would be achieved across the state in terms of cities and counties that did not participate. So we do anticipate that to come back up in the context of local government financing, as well as we all know that you, that counties and cities pay about almost getting close to $100 million a year of state sales tax on construction projects that we desperately think is bad policy and we should get rid of. So with that, I'm going to turn the slides over to Mr. Novak to talk about transportation briefly. And, but having answered any questions, and I'll come back up quick at the end if there's questions as well.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. It's always nice to be in Scott County. So let me just get right to it in terms of what did and didn't happen in transportation this year. The big disappointment, of course, was no bonding bill. One of the pluses, though, was no change in the law related to leased vehicle sales taxes, which is the second-largest pot of money Scott County gets for roads and bridges. And so it seems like it was simple to have no change, but Hennepin and Ramsey County had it in their platforms to enjoy part of the money that you receive. And that did not happen, so we're pleased about it. Overall, the bulk of the work in transportation this year could be found in four bills. House File 3436, which was the Omnibus Transportation Policy Bill. House File 5242, which was the Omnibus Transportation Finance Bill. Both of those did pass, and I'll give you the details in just a moment. And then the other two were related to bonding. House File 5220, the Capitol Bonding Bill, and House File 5162, the so-called Bonding Cash Bill. Neither of which did pass. They came close on the last night of the session, but did not happen. So let me take you quickly through the House File 3436, the Omnibus Transportation Policy Bill. That was a bill that had a lot of small policy issues in it. Almost none of them were controversial. And really only one directly affected our MICA transportation platform. That had to do with our traditional position of opposing increased truck weights for various types of things that come up around the state. There were two issues that did pass. They were very contained to small geographic areas. One had to do with the sugar beet industry up in East Grand Forks. The other one had to do with sewage trucks performing emergency services. So we feel in that area, things went quite well. Both bills in the House and the Senate passed by large bipartisan margins. House File 5242, the Transportation Finance Bill. A lot of work was done on that. Unfortunately, the leadership gave Transportation Finance a very small target, $4 million. But through cancellations and other things, they did move a lot of money around. And in the end, they distributed $117 million. The two items that I think would be of note for Scott County possibly, the $15 million went to Corvus of Commerce, which is an ongoing program that was started about eight years ago and is very successful. And then another $15 million to the state road construction account, where there's a lineup of projects that counties are involved on the front end of the process. And I think everyone views that to be fair. On the policy side of the Transportation Finance Bill is where we did spend a lot of time. And Tony and Lisa and others from here county joined the MICA engineers from around our jurisdictions to actively work on trying to reshape the policy part of the finance bill that had passed in 2023 related to the greenhouse gas emissions assessment process. That kind of came over the top when everybody was focused on very large amounts of money in 2023. So a task force had been formed. It met every other week from July of 2023 through February of 2024. And we were successful in getting some significant changes to otherwise what would have been a more stringent policy. And changes had to do with looking at all of these proposed road and bridge projects from a project analysis requirement of a portfolio of projects versus project by project, which gives a little more flexibility to finding solutions to the problems that are there. Part of that whole solution was the creation of an ongoing technical advisory committee, which will have local government representatives on it. And frankly, most of the changes that were positive that came out of the process of the task force over eight months was because of the input from our county engineers. And so it's our hope that they'll be included in this ongoing committee. The other big item that was secured is to keep safety as a top priority for future road and bridge projects. There was a period of months when that was in doubt. And that has been secured, and we're happy about that. That would take me to the two bonding proposals. There's not a lot to say really about big bills that don't pass. We do a lot of lobbying, but the one thing they don't give us is the right to vote. And if the legislators decide not to, we haven't developed an effective strategy for that as yet. But I will tell you this, as you look to 2025, there would have been, the last thing we heard a few days out from the end of the session, from the two bonding chairs, we would have had the money in there that we had wanted for local roads and bridges and the local road wetland program, all of which need to be done. Politics intervened, and it didn't work out the way we would have otherwise liked it to. So with that, I'll just conclude with a couple of items. I know a lot of you over the years have followed the annual Washington DC fly-in, which is going to be September 17th to the 19th. There'll be a lot going on out there. Taking a peek forward into the 2025 session, I think two issues to keep an eye on will be a hopeful bonding bill, which will fix a lot of the things that didn't happen this year when the bill died on the last day. And then also, the real big victory, I think, was in 2023, the front year of this biennium, where significant new transportation revenues were secured in a lot of existing funding programs, like gas tax and license tabs and so on and so forth. And I would say, depending on the result of the election, you know, there could be an attempt to reduce backwards or to cut those increased revenues. And so I think standing guard, the reasons why they were secured in the first place will be a good position to be in. And it's going to be significant new money for transportation on an ongoing basis. And that was a significant accomplishment that we want to retain. So with that, I would conclude. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Not a question, but I understand you're retiring. And I did want to thank you for all the years of excellent service, the way you've served at MICA. And you've really done a great job. And I've enjoyed my time working with you.
Well, you're very kind. And I was going to ask for one minute of indulgence, just for me to be able to say to you, because this is going to conclude my career at the end of next month. I've had many visits out to Scott County. And I just wanted to say thank you for the many courtesies that have been extended to me by your board and your administrator, and especially the engineering department, who I've gotten to know quite well and have had a lot of great discussions and good times with. So appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you for bringing that up. And we echo Commissioner Ulrich's thanks and appreciation for all your work.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'm Nancy Seleski, and I handle both Public Health and Human Services for MICA. And it's a pleasure to be here this morning. I'm going to start with the first bill that passed on a bipartisan basis related to emergency medical services funding. That was something that the legislature did put $30 million into. I think everyone's acknowledged that that's not enough money at this point. They're looking for, trying to figure out a permanent solution related to two EMS, but they did make some progress on that. The African-American Family Preservation Act, or the Leila Jackson Law, is something that the legislature also has been working on for a very long time. I know that this is something that is important to Scott County. There were two components that passed. One is there's a pilot program that Ramsey and Hennepin Counties will participate in for a two-year period. And then underneath that is a working group. And that working group will provide guidance and oversight of that pilot over the next two years. At our request, MICA's request, we were given authority, appointing authority for one position. So we are working with the other county organizations to make sure that we have the right people on the work group, because we want to make sure that smaller counties, as well as, we need geographical balance as it relates to this. By September 1st of 2026, the working group is to come up with best practices. And then it goes statewide on January 1st of 2027. And I know Scott County is in the process of hosting the two authors of this bill, Senator Bobby Joe Champion, Representative Esther Agbaghe, in September, I believe. And so continuing to work on that issue. The next item I would mention are the children and families provisions that were tucked into the education bill at the legislature. In terms of child protection and welfare, it requires a review of child fatalities and near fatalities. It requires counties to establish local child mortality review teams. And DHS is required to provide training and support to counties for this. They're creating a new Supreme Court Council on Child Protection. And DHS is to review systems in other states in an effort to come up with a common entry system for reporting child maltreatment. Also, DHS is required to develop a new IT system, a child welfare information system. They did put $10 million into the Social Services Information System, SSIS. And they put $1.1 million into childcare improvement grants. In terms of policy, there's language that allows childcare centers and family childcare providers to develop policies relating to immunizations for children over two months of age. They're also putting $350,000 in, ongoing into Family Childcare Ombuds Person. And one of the things that we were disappointed that was not included is we wanted to see a fiscal analysis of the child welfare system. We know that counties are putting in lots and lots of money on this, and we really wanted to raise that issue to the legislature. Unfortunately, it came out at the end, but we'll continue to work in that vein. The next item is the Human Services Budget Bill, which is Senator Hoffman, Representative Noor. I'll hit the highlights. They did make some modest changes to the Men Choices Tool. It allows counties to continue contracting for Men Choices assessments. It eliminates the two years of direct experience in home and behavioral, excuse me, home and committee-based services experience for Men Choices assessors. Modifies the timeline in which a county must visit an individual who has requested this assessment from 20 calendar days to 20 working days. And then extends the validity of the Men Choices Assessment from 60 days to 365 days. One of the things that we really want to see in the future is the situation related to reassessments, where a person's situation is not going to change from year to year. We're really wanting a more streamlined process for those folks. Unfortunately, that does, did create a fiscal note. And so we continue to work with the department on that proposal. In terms of jail health, DHS is directed to submit a waiver application for an MA demonstration project to provide healthcare and coordination services to bridge community-based services for individuals that are in correctional facilities. And they did, they created a re-entry services work group that does include counties. And finally, related to jail health is a pilot program to provide payment to counties to support correctional facilities administering long-acting injectable medicines for people for mental health treatment. Priority admissions and civil commitment. You've heard a lot about that. We continue to discuss that. They did make some changes on that this year. But the biggest issue is that we need resources. We need beds in both the local communities, our local communities, as well as state-operated. Last year, I think, as you know, we did get a reprieve, two-year reprieve for those folks that have been deemed mentally ill and dangerous and are waiting a bed in one state-operated setting and going to another that ends at the end of July. And in terms of savings, for the first six months, it was $8 million for counties. And so we want to continue to have discussions on that. We want to make sure that these dollars get into where they're needed in these beds. They also, they did establish a mentally ill and dangerous civil commitment reform task force. And they did provide 10 beds, or, excuse me, 10 beds will be immediately available for folks that have been languishing in hospitals. HCMC testified that they had somebody there for more than a year. And so they did give a one-time 10-bed reprieve to move those folks to the front. In terms of ORAC or the opioid response, there was a sunset date for the manufacturer's fees that goes into ORAC. They eliminated that sunset. So that will, those manufacturer fees will continue to come into the state. They eliminated parental fees for parents with incomes over a certain issue for children that receive MA in disability or residential settings. And DHS is to consult with counties to improve case management information systems. And my last slide is the Health and Human Services Bill, Senator Wicklin, Representative Labling. They did set a telecommunications fee at 12 cents per line. And those dollars will go into the operation and maintenance of the 988 suicide prevention and crisis system. Something that we've been working on for a long time, and again, as a priority for Scott County, is the development of a covered benefit under MA to provide residential mental health crisis services for children. That, or the department is to consult with counties and other advocates, tribal nations, et cetera, on this and report back next year, October 1st of 2025, with their findings. Madam Chair and Commissioner, that is a monthly, every. Madam Chair and Commissioner, I don't have that number, but I can. Yeah, I can try to put that together. And I'm sure there's a, yeah, I can dig into that, look into that more. Also, a couple other things I just want to mention relative to the Wicklin-Labling Bill. And that is, it requires child placing agencies, so counties, to notify an Indian child's tribe or tribes immediately or no later than 24 hours after receiving information on a missing child. Again, those are the highlights. I want to conclude by recognizing some of your staff that I work very closely with. Barb Dahl, Carrie, we met, Perry Mulcrone, Lisa Brodsky. They're all, you know, very, very valuable for MICA discussions, as well as counties statewide. And I just want to make sure that you, that I recognize them. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Nancy. You have a huge portfolio, a ton to keep track of. And thank you, I mean, a couple of the priorities that you've already outlined as MICA priorities, Men Choices. a couple of the priorities that you've already outlined as, as MICA priorities, Men Choices and, and child protection, they definitely will be our priorities this year, so we look forward to working with you on that.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Nancy?
Thank you.
Well, Madam Chair and members, I have, Commissioners, we have, I have one more slide, but in the interest of time, I think that a number of things, starting at the bottom of the page, actually, we've already, you talked about in your work group, MICA has followed closely and helped moderate, not to the extent that we were hoping for, but some of the changes to E S S T and paid family medical leave as those programs are working towards full implementation. We also, there was also a change in the paracorrectional plan that will cost counties more money. There was an increase in the annuity multiplier for paracorrectional recipients when they reach retirement age and the cost of funding that increased annuity computation will be funded by an increased contribution by both employers and employees in the same proportionality as was under previous law, but it will net cost counties about four to five million dollars more annually across the state. Those are the kinds of changes that we will also be, those and other adjustments that the legislature considers to public pension funds going forward and in part of our, a large part of our message will always be as the state changes policy, they should step up and, and help fund those changes as well. Top of the page, there was a number of significant changes in environment solid waste this last session that just, I'll just mention, the one is the Packaging Waste and Cost Reduction Act that will, once fully implemented, that's about 40% of the waste stream, it will, when fully implemented, also be a benefit to counties as, as you operate your waste collection systems and recycling programs, this will require producers to contribute to a fund that will help offset recycling and waste management costs that both county providers and other providers are engaging in. And so with that, Madam Chair and members, I'm happy to answer any questions. We are now very focused, as I mentioned on the beginning, on January 14th, 2025, which is a change that we're all happy about, the legislature now meets, convenes on the first Tuesday following the second Monday, I think is the way the calculation works in January, which is the latest it possibly could be this coming year, January 14th.
Can I ask, Madam Chair, Matt, how many new legislators will there be for sure because of retirements and not running? Do you know that number?
Well, just, good question and, and thank you, Commissioner Wolf. So the, the dynamic is probably the most question, the biggest question mark in Minnesota that we have had in a long time. The House is up for reelection, so as a body, the House is the only body that's up for reelection, of course, there is 134 House members. I think there's about, I'm looking to my colleagues, there's about 20 retirements.
I see, okay.
But then there, so, and, and open seats.
But then the Senate, isn't there one special election, one awesome, like, and that might turn the whole thing?
The Senate is currently tied because Senator Kelly Morrison resigned her seat to run for Congress and so the Senate is currently tied, not in session, of course, 3333 with a special election that is happening in that district. And of course, yes, with, with Governor Walz on the presidential ticket, should the Harris-Walz ticket win in November, that would also have, the lieutenant governor elevates, that also has a cascading dynamic in, in the Senate.
Okay.
Good question, thank you. Other questions or comments? All right, thank you, Matt.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy, thank you, Steve, we really appreciate the partnership and the partnership among all of us, but especially also appreciate the different work groups. You know, we just talked about the Human Services Director, MICA Work Group, the Administrators' Work Group, it provides a lot of value to us to have the structure to work with our colleagues, so thank you very much and we are proud members of MICA.
Thank you all and I do want to thank Michelle for helping me out and getting the PowerPoint.
Leslie, did you have anything to add on this?
No, I just wanted to thank him for all his work and being able to call him at all hours of the day and ask some questions and then for attending this morning early at our work session, I think that was good as well, so thank you, Matt, for all your work.
Appreciate it and we're heading out, not because we don't want to stay, but we're headed to your friends at Carver County, so.
Right, tell them what we, we think and get them to jump on board with us.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
We like Carver.
All right, thank you. We will move to item five on our agenda, which is our monthly Scott County Delivers topic. Today is on child placement continuum. Good morning, Chris Harder, I haven't said good morning to you yet, thanks for being here and I think you're going to get us started.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners, thank you very much. We are launching today all-things children. We are starting with this conversation about placement continuums. This afternoon, we're moving into a workshop on child services and all the programs that contribute to outcomes for children and families, so I just think this is a, a nice way to tee up that day. Evan, could you go to page nine for me, please? There are a couple key themes that I'd like to, like us to focus on this morning. One is that overall in Scott County, there is a very low rate of out-of-home placement and I think that's a very important thing to keep in mind because there's, the vast majority of work that you're going to hear about today goes into preventing kids from going into placement, so there's a low rate of out-of-home placements, as you can see on the, on the snapshot, on the monitor. Of the children who are placed in family foster care, almost two-thirds of those children are placed with relatives and you're going to hear a lot about that this morning. And then the third key theme, I think, is that for a very small number of children, their needs are so extraordinary that finding the right placement setting to meet those needs is difficult. I think you're going to hear some about the challenges and some of the creativity that comes around serving those youth as well. So we're happy to have a group of people with lots of really great experience to talk about that. I'd like to start by asking the people on the facilitation side to introduce yourselves, who you are and what department you're with and then Gretchen, if you could, if the people on the panel could introduce themselves and which program area they work in, we'll get started.
Cindy Geis, Community Services.
Kate Savatrick, Environmental Services.
Lisa Vries, Transportation Services.
Gretchen Young, Licensing.
Brenda Mathany, Community Corrections at the JAF.
Melissa Hurt, Children's Disability Services.
Samantha Goldman, Child Protection.
Steve Brown, Children's Mental Health, Truancy and Chemical competency.
Good morning, Nikki Conway, Child Welfare Manager.
Great, thanks all for being here this morning. Kate, did you want to start with your first question?
Yes, so, kind of going off what Chris, so the narrative explains that the placement numbers are down overall, but youth are presenting more often with complex needs. Can you explain that more, what challenges you're facing?
Yeah, I think overall, this, we've talked a lot in Scott County about the placement continuum, so I think maybe to start off, we can draw your attention to page two, there's, there's a graphic that sort of shows what the continuum of care looks like. So obviously from a philosophical perspective, we know that kids thrive in their own families, right? We want kids to be with their own families and living, you know, living in that world as much as possible. You can see on the bottom, that's where we start with, own family and it kind of, that's the least restrictive setting and it kind of goes up from there to the locked correctional facility, which would be the most restrictive setting. So I want to highlight that this continuum is not necessarily, like, you can enter it at any point, right? It doesn't necessarily flow exactly in a straight line, but there are a number of different ways that we can, can intervene there, so, so number one to your question, I would say that, yes, we are seeing young people with a lot more complex needs, but what we are also seeing is a, is a continuum of care that isn't fully built out. So we don't have all of the right types of placements and settings, so rather than framing it like kids are impossible, it's more like our system hasn't, hasn't really been nimble enough and flexible enough to meet the needs of kids and families. But I will give it to Steve and Samantha, maybe they talk a little bit more about what challenges they see with, with families and complex needs of young people.
Yeah, that's a, that's an interesting question because there's, I mean, they, I mean, one family to the next, one child to the next is, is quite different. We're seeing an increase, you know, some of the families might see their children who have autism and also have aggressive behavior and so they don't respond to, you know, your traditional therapies or medications even and so they take specialized community providers to really do that and it's the families, the aggression in the families and these might be families who have their own wellbeing issues in terms of their own mental health or they might be really highly functioning parents who just can't meet the needs of their own child, who are aggressing towards them, who are running out the doors into the streets, who are being challenged, challenged daycare providers to be able to meet their needs, they're aggressing towards other children, so these are, these are the most difficult children to address needs.
I would also add that we see a lot of children who return into the system, so you have a child who have made, achieved permanency through the court system when they were younger, the relative provider or the traditional provider wasn't given substantial resources to support that child and so as they become a youth, their behaviors increase based on the lack of support they've received and so we find ourselves working with families and youth who have disrupted placements and return to the system and either remain in foster care until they age out or we work jointly with Children's Mental Health or Children's Disabilities Unit to create a plan that will meet their needs and help stabilize them.
I would also add, I think that there are specific behaviors and kind of combinations of things that do make it really difficult based on the limits of our system, so I know Brenda works in the JAF and they see this quite often, right? If you have things like sexual acting-out behaviors or aggressive behaviors and/or are in Melissa's world, sort of on the cusp of, of catty waiver developmental disability and with an IQ, sometimes placements just struggle with being able to handle all the different types of kids in, in, in the setting at the same time, so I don't know, Brenda, if you have anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, I would say for, like, I think of one of the Scott County youth that we worked with that, her history had made it just more challenging for her to find any type of placement, whether it be with foster parents or anything on the lower end of the spectrum, was that she came with us with so many mental health diagnosis, a history of traumatic events. I do believe that there was some developmental disabilities and for her, just trying to be able to find that most appropriate and safe setting was really, really challenging to, which is what led to her being an out-of-home placement with us at the JAF.
So I have two questions. One is, Steve, last week at the budget conversation, Commissioner Beer asked you what kept you up at night and you said that what kept you up at night was when there wasn't the right service for somebody and you had to try to piece something together to make it work for that individual. So two questions, one is can you be more specific about exactly what is missing and two, can, can, like, the three supervisors sort of talk about how you're building, like, how you're creating something when nothing exists?
Yeah, when you get to chat, I mean, yeah, so you're asking questions, we're processing at the same time because these are very difficult questions and we're all struggling with it, right? I mean, all counties, all states. The complexities, when you get a child who aggresses towards a staff, a professional or a parent, an adult or a teacher, those are the most difficult ones to find because they, when you look for a potential placement for stabilization, a QRT, QRTP or a PRTF residential setting to address their mental health concerns, they also have children there who are potentially vulnerable and they have staff who are potentially exposed to violence and so a lot of times that's a criteria to say, like, we, we can't manage the, the needs of this, this child and so there's lots of no's across the board for various settings and we'll go through a long list trying to find a placement for a child when the parent says, we can't meet their needs. So that's, that's pretty exhausting and a lot of times what happens, either they're sitting in the emergency room or parents are like struggling day in and day out with these very, very dangerous behaviors. And so we, last resort, we knock on JAF's door and say, can we, I mean, kind of as a last resort, knowing this is not the best interest of child, knowing we are really trying to establish safety. So safety and a finding a provider that can meet their needs, who's specialized in understanding the diagnosis and are well-staffed.
So if you look at, can we go back to that continuum for just a second? Can you, do you, can you say with more specificity, like, where are the gaps in that continuum that you are, because it sounds like some places exist even that won't take the children you're trying to place, so like, where are the gaps? Where, where, where are the holes in the continuum where a resource does not exist?
So a lot of our data here will show that and like you pointed out, Chris, at the beginning, that most of the time, we are very, very successful in Scott County with placing kids with their family if they can't be at home with their parents or coming up with creative arrangements, for example, where grandparents can move into a home and provide some safety, so their, their vast majority of young people and families' needs are being met in that, in that family home. The other part about it is we know that residential treatment, one of the reasons residential treatment doesn't work well is because you're taking the child out of the environment, right? And then not doing a whole lot of work with the family in the meantime and then putting the child back in the environment and, and the cycle continues, so to be able to continue to work with that family unit is paramount, so I want to make sure to continue to focus on that. But as you sort of move up here, I think what we've seen is, when Steve talks about some acronyms, PRTF is psychiatric residential treatment facility, so that would be sort of in between this children's residential home or treatment and inpatient hospital or treatment. So DHS created funding or, I don't even want to say funding, created some opportunities to implement some of those beds several years ago and none of them came to fruition in the same way that they were supposed to, so there were supposed to be like 300 added beds to sort of alleviate some of the pressure on the inpatient hospital programs and things like that, those didn't come to fruition. Some of the children's residential treatment beds were sort of repurposed into psychiatric residential treatment and we could get into a whole rabbit hole about how all of that works, but there's a clog there. I would also think that, or point out that crisis respite is another area where there's really a gap. So we see this inpatient hospital, the goal there is to sort of get kids in and out of that, like, that's not intended to be a long-term solution because it is so restrictive and there's a gap between that and what is the next step. So I think Samantha and Melissa could talk a little bit about, like, utilizing catty waivers, utilizing safety plans, how do we, how do we address those gaps when they exist in the continuum?
I think to answer your question, I would, I would point to, when a child needs to be removed for safety concerns and we are looking at what service do we provide to be the least restrictive, which ideally is to keep the child within the family unit, we look for community resources, we look for mental health services, we look for other support services that are intensive, that can be brought into the home to support maintaining that child or youth within their family unit. And so one of the gaps I see when I look at this continuum is I see that there is, like, everywhere, there is a lot of missing in-home services, there's a lot of missing intensive in-home therapeutic services. If you were to ask me 10 years ago, I would say, yep, I could make that referral to this organization within the community, they would come in two to three times a week and work very closely with that family to support, like Nikki had mentioned, those behaviors within the home and make progress towards safety or child wellbeing or both. That, there is a missing gap there and so when we don't have that, there are things that we work least restrictive, I can think of an example where we had a youth who had significantly high needs and actually qualified for disability services and so within our work, together with Children's Disability Services, we were able to locate something, a placement within that realm that met the needs of this youth or this child and was least restrictive for her, but also provided the support and service that she needed, which generally would not have been able to be successful in anything probably below a family foster care setting within this continuum. Okay, thanks, Sarah.
I would add, when these families are so stressed that they're saying, I'm done, sometimes they just need like a little bit of a break and there's not, that would be a gap, sometimes there's just a, like a place, doesn't need to be a medical response, it doesn't need to be a, a JAF response, but some, like, and sometimes it's foster care, but there's, there's, there's gaps there. A place where we could say, if...
A place where we could say, call it emergency respite for stabilization, just to give the family a break, kind of regroup. And that little space of time can sometimes be enough for a family to go, thanks. We can step back in it and continue to move forward.
Thank you.
Two more things to add, sorry. I think there's also gaps with specific age groups, right? So a lot of the ways that facilities are licensed are around specific ages. And I know this is something JAF struggles with at times, too. When you, we don't want to have an 11-year-old with a 17-year-old. And there are some needs for variations in order to meet those needs. And then specific types of placements. So like DHS has, has done a lot of work around accrediting, like, placements for youth who have potentially been sexually exploited, right? So you have certain types of things that exist in the same way. And there's curriculum that is developed, staff are trained in a certain way, all of those types of things. And the hard part is, you never know what's going to happen at the, at the right time, right? So it's like all about balancing what's best for that kid at the right time, in the right setting, all of those things. So it's hard to maintain some of those specific settings when you might have five kids that need it today and zero kids that need it for the next year, right? So how do you kind of keep workforce balanced and all of those things? And the second thing I would add is, part of the issue is, our system is siloed, right? And we are doing a lot of work internally in Scott County to break down those silos. But in a state, from the state's perspective and the federal perspective, it's very siloed. So we have correctional facilities that are licensed correctional facilities. We have foster care, which is licensed by DHS. Then we have the developmental disabilities, which is a whole different area. And so when you have young people who are human and exist not in silos, but as whole people and have all of those things going on at one time, it's really hard to find the type of setting that's going to meet their needs. So a correctional setting might not be able to handle it because there's too many mental health things going on. A mental health setting might not be able to handle it because there's too many behaviors or their IQ isn't high enough. So all of those things sort of contribute to these, like, perfect storm situations.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to back the bus up a little bit. Samantha, you talked about some gaps. I think you talked about some, a few years ago, not that many years ago, that you had opportunities to call on for some of these gaps that we have today. Can you expand on that? Because I want to understand that a little bit better. And what is missing? Did we have some, or there was something, there was something, because I'm attributing that, and then you're, and now there isn't that opportunity? So what, what is that?
I think COVID changed a lot of how providers work with families. Prior to COVID and even earlier than that, families would get in-home services and supports. And a lot of partner organizations, whether they were within Scott County, Carver, or surrounding counties, would come to the home and do intensive services. With the change of COVID, and from my understanding, that is how I would see it change. I know there might be a different reason. But lately, what we've seen is we, we struggle to find in-home support services that will come to the home and do the work, whether it's because the mental health field struggles to hire and retain qualified professionals, or they don't want to do that work, I'm not sure. But for me, it is being able to see that there was that area within the last 10 years and that has shifted, and it's either virtual or it's in office.
So COVID blew it up, but it was kind of decrescendoing before that is, is the labor crunch. So, so the options there still sort of, but the delivery is very different, which makes night and day.
I think the delivery, yes, I think the delivery is different. I think if you were to reach out to community partners and ask what services they offer, that is something we hear often that they no longer offer. And why they do that is unique to each organization. But at the end of the day, it is they don't offer it. So we assume that there is a struggle on their end to meet that need.
And prior to CTSS, CTSS is a billable service. And prior to CTSS, it was a county's contracted for in-home family therapy. So the county had more, I mean, you could develop your own resources. You could contract with them, you could develop the quality and what that looked like. So you could, there was, there was more providers then when we went to CTSS billable model. We, I think we lost some and then it came back up. But to go into the home and road time costs money, especially if they don't answer the door. So then you're going back to the office. So it's, it, from a provider standpoint, it's hard to deliver and, and that is a gap.
Do we deliver it? Does the mental health center provide it?
CTSS.
In-home?
Oh, in-home, well, with the CTSS, yeah. I mean.
They do at, within the, the right setting, with the right therapist. We have had success at times where they have been able to go in and do in-home services.
So in one of the follow-up, too, Steve, you talked about the ability to have a respite moment or, or, you know, that catch-your-breath kind of, we had more of that and now we don't? Did I hear that right?
We did not have that.
Okay.
We've never really, I mean, that, that's why we partner with our catty folks is, is to develop, so the way to access, the catty waiver has a menu kind of a service to be able to access respite services there. Or we use a, you know, we patch together with our licensing folks to see if there's a, we can make a match with a licensed foster family to do that. But that takes time to do that versus kind of in-the-moment response to have a kid go somewhere.
Part of the bigger picture here, too, is that a lot of the young people we're talking about maintaining at home right now, five years ago, were in residential treatment centers, right? So because we have, like, we want to maintain them at home and the service array hasn't sort of caught up with that. And it is difficult, you know? I mean, we're, we're all struggling to parent and do all the things that we need to do. But the, it's the, it's the good consequence of, you know, lessening the dependence on that deep-end services. So now we've got folks who are sort of unprepared and untrained to deal with the same types of things in the community.
So I have a question. You know, you, it, it looks like you're going to focus on, in the future, Family Resource Center and some of these other, other centers. What have you seen so far that they've provided that was, that helped eliminate people from getting into child protection in the first place?
Can I answer that? So when I think of Family Resource Centers, when we have child protection reports and we meet with the family to address the child protection concern, a lot of the concerns can be alleviated by referring that family for resources. So whether it's mental health services, basic needs, maybe they, we connect them to get, apply for medic, medical assistance and some food support to help financially make sure they're stabilized. Or is it parenting support because they aren't sure how to respond to their child when they do X, Y, or Z? So what we see is that when we refer those people to services and they can easily access them, the number of placements are reduced and the, the need for deep-end services or case management services within child protection go down because we are providing upfront services and support before they get into a further crisis that would warrant further child protection intervention.
I don't know if this is appropriate, sorry, but Melissa, can you speak to some of the services that waivers can provide to families, too?
Yeah, absolutely. So if a child is determined to have a diagnosis that meets criteria for either developmental disability or a mental health or physical disability, there's a whole menu of services that can be available to them. For the purpose of this conversation, I think crisis respite is the one that we look to the most. The challenge with that is there's only a few providers out there. And they fill up quickly and they are working with some of the most complex kiddos out there. And so a lot of times, those providers are, they're focused on who already is in their care. So when you're saying, do you have space? Do you have another bed? It's like, well, maybe. It's not just a guarantee, like, they have to think about the safety of their kids in the home. And do they have staff to cover the needs of multiple children? So that, I think, often becomes a barrier. We also have providers that we just haven't met yet. I know Jeff Dakers spoke to this last week in front of the board about, it's fairly easy for providers to get licensed by the state to provide a long list of services, and one of those is that crisis respite. But it does not inherently guarantee the staff providing the direct care have had specialty training, working with complex diagnoses. And that becomes really hard. And that's a safety concern, too, for the staff and the, and the child. So there's a lot of kind of informal vetting that has to happen by us as supervisors and our case managers having those conversations of, you know, what is your experience? Do you truly have the ability to take on supporting another kid right now? Whether that be to provide a, a short-term break for the family or maybe an indefinite to see if the child can return home. So that's one of the issues that we, we handle there. And then additionally, when we need a long-term placement, those are also very limited to find. And it takes a lot of time. And if we have scoured every single provider that we know, and we'll look in the whole metro area, I mean, we want to keep them as close to home as possible. I mean, you think about things like they still need to go to school. There might be others, some family members that if you're too far away, they won't even have a visit, you know, opportunity to do that. So long-term, if we check everybody and nobody has availability, then I work with Gretchen. And we do have the ability from the state to request permission to develop a new bed, like a, a single site for somebody. But generally, you have to provide at least 10 denials of all the places you've checked. You have to keep following up on it. And then you have to find a willing provider and say, we need you to develop a single site. And that involves basically, like, if you were to think you wanted to go buy a new home, that's it. You have to find a property, you got to make a, you know, all that stuff. So it takes a lot of time. But I have in my work seen that be successful and it does happen. It just takes a really strong partnership. There has to be a lot of trust and a lot of patience. But it does happen, but that would be like our kind of final end, like, try to everything else.
So you brought up some recruitment work. I'm wondering, facilitators, if you have questions related to recruitment? Can we talk a little bit about what we're doing to sort of fill in some of these?
I just haven't been able to jump in yet. But one of the things I wanted all of you to talk about, or the appropriate people here, is to talk about the fight, the foster care efforts that you've been undertaking the last couple of years. And in your narrative, you talk about the applications are up, but the number of new licenses don't seem to correspond with the applications. And what are some of the barriers to bringing these interested families, both relative and more traditional, into the foster care program? And what can be done to kind of fix that issue?
That's me. So the, the numbers, overall, I think the, the numbers are still, were fairly small. I think that is the piece you're pointing out there around the difference in between people completing the application and completing the licensing process. Because we do a really nice job with relatives and also a really nice job of working on that reunification, there can be times when children are returned to families before the licensing process is completed. And so they may say, well, I've done that. Like, I don't need to complete that process. Or they might apply and life happens, something else comes up, and they're, they've decided that they're not able to continue with that process. So I think that those are kind of our biggest factors of why folks might not get through the process. And then to talk about a little bit what we've been working on as far as foster care recruitment. So we started a work group in the fall of 2023. And we have a focus of community engagement, so getting out and getting information about foster care out into the community. Internal strategies, what things can we do to better communicate about placements, to support foster families? And then just that ongoing support retention of the folks that we do have that are licensed. So the, so been kind of the main areas the work group is focused on. And then we're looking really to recruit homes that reflect the, the cultural diversity within the, the community. So children are placed in homes that they feel comfortable in when they do need to come into foster care. Homes that can care for teens and help them navigate independence and identity issues as they, they go through their teenage years. And then, as we've talked about before, homes that can support youth affected by trauma and mental health.
I think one of the things I picked up in the discussion was how foster homes might be able to help with the rest of the care that's needed and what does it take to kind of bring families who are in the foster care arena along to be able to do that and support, which is something that's been identified as a gap for families.
Right, yeah. So when we work with families, like, that's often something we'll talk about is respite care is a nice way for them to kind of get a short-term experience of what the care is like. You know, usually when kids are coming and when they're leaving, that's a, a good combination. I think it's, oftentimes, I think the, that matches up with, you need folks who want to care for teens. And that sometimes is maybe a little more scary for folks. Teens can be a little intimidating, but that's, that's definitely something we're looking for. But oftentimes, folks who want to care for teens, we will talk about, we can just be willing to start with some respite and we'll see how it goes.
Right. This is a big continuum, too, I think. And toward the conversation around partnering with community and getting upstream and figuring things out, right? We have our bureaucratic system, so respite care could be through a fully licensed foster home or there could be some creative solutions. So DHS, just in the last week or so, came out with a new process for children's mental health respite care, which is where we're getting most of our respite requests from around this teen population. And there might be some ways to be a little bit more creative in that. And we are having some active conversations with some different faith communities around that, too. And partnering with, like, Shepherd of the Lake, for example, has a group of folks that they're calling Empty Nesters, who are folks where their, their kids have gone and moved on and are looking to have some things to do with their time. So we're trying to talk to them about what that means to create respite care. So that could either be this fully licensed situation or it's things like, how do we get to a camp or get to the YWCA or whatever? Some kind of programming that's going to give the parent a break, right? I don't know about anyone here, I, I coach a lot of youth sports for my own family and I feel like I provide a lot of respite care for a lot of families across my own community, frankly. I'm like, oh, you just get to drop your kid off and leave. And I'm just over here doing respite. So we got to figure out some ways to, to be creative in that realm as well.
Can you, oh, go ahead, Samantha. Sorry, I feel like I need to add this. So when you think of respite, the other thing that we do within child protection is we utilize family for informal respite. So we'll get together, then, a network of people. And if there isn't an opportunity for a formal foster care provider to provide respite, we'll work with the family unit or their supports to create a plan that gives respite to the parents informally with a weekend planned or a month-long plan or something similar. Or if we have a foster parent who is willing to provide respite, we're bringing them into the family unit to be part of that plan to help support the family. So it can go both ways. It doesn't have to be formalized respite care. It also can be informal family planning.
Yeah, the goal is really to normalize as much as possible and then least restrictive. And you just try to, it's, it's those most difficult kids with the families. And that's part of the complexity as well, is these families sometimes are moving in from state. They don't have fam, they're not connected to a church. And so they're, they're really quite isolated, so those are the most difficult. So then you are looking pretty quickly to more of the, the formal services.
A question on, this is slide 17, page 17. This does a breakdown of the different age groups. And I noticed that there was a decrease in out-of-home placements for birth to two, went down significantly, and then also 15 to 17. So I know we care about all of the youth, but do you know what factored into those decreases? Were you focusing on certain age groups? And in addition to, are you concerned about different age groups?
So speaking to birth to two, I believe is what you had indicated, 21 to 11 this year. Specifically for that age group, I think, over the last couple of years and partnering with the court system and other professionals within child protection, the focus is, how do we keep little children within their home? Because we know that's best. We know that children need to stay with their parents. And if we can create informal plans or formalized plans through what we would call a SNAP plan or SNAP arrangement, which would be a Safety Network Action Plan arrangement, we are going to work with that family on a voluntary basis to keep that children or keep that child or children from entering placement while staying within their home but having safety in place. So we're working with a relative or another family friend who we've identified as a person who can provide. who can provide safety moving into the home temporarily, or having that family unit stay with them, so that they can work with us to address the safety concerns while not actually entering a formal placement. Because what we know is that children who enter placements, that's a traumatic event. So we're trying to reduce any traumatic events for children, as well as work with the family on, what is it that you want? What plan do you want to see for your child, knowing that we have this concern and we need to address it, but also making you the, you have the ability to create your own plan that meets safety?
On page 13, my question is more, how many of these kids are in this continuum for a longer period? I saw that 83% are moved in with relatives, or something to that effect. What is the amount of time that they spend with those before they can either return home, or that they're, until they're permanent with that relative? And so, how do you explain these numbers, you know, with ongoing needs? And where do they, how many, how long do the kids usually stay in placement?
Right. I don't know that we have specific data on average length of stay overall, but what I'll say is that, over the course of years, on this slide and the previous slide we were just looking at on page 17, these are duplicated kids from year to year. So that each year, it's an unduplicated count, right? But a lot of those young people, like, when we look at, there were 92 and 23, and now we have 75 through 24, a lot of those 92 have carried over, right, into this year. There is a snapshot about timeliness to permanency, too, I'm trying to remember what page it's on, where we do a pretty good job making sure that we have permanent outcomes for young people in the course of 12 months, that's legal permanency, so that, you know, it's important for young people to know where they're going to end up and be. So that's, that happens often. I would say that the other part about even the age slide is, a lot of these young people who are 12 to 17, when they're entering the system, or they're counted in these numbers, that's not their first time entering the system. Most of the time, we're talking about these young people have been in care at different times over the course of their life. So it's not just the first time that we're seeing them at age 16, right? And I would think that our numbers there, like, that's the population we're really talking about today, as far as being those young people that we have a hard time finding placements for, when we do have those few that happen. And, yeah, I guess we'll leave it at that.
We have nine youth over the last two years still seeking permanent homes. So that means that nine of our youth, the youngest we have right now is 12 or 13, who we are actively recruiting, either for a permanent home through adoption, or there's long-term custody through the agency, that we are teaching them how to be an adult. We are working with them till they turn 18. We're hoping they stay on with us after 18, and we help teach them life skills to go into the world a little bit prepared for what adulthood has. And so, of those nine youth, for a multitude of reasons, we haven't been able to secure permanency for them, or what they're doing right now and working towards independent living is what is best for them.
Where are those kids at?
Some of them, well, one of them is with a relative, which we hope that they will be able to live with that relative permanently. And there was a lot of work that, that particular youth was at JAF, and then that youth went to a traditional foster home many, many miles away. And then through our relative search efforts, we were able to locate family members who helped us, or we helped them decide whether or not they want to be a formal, like, placement for this youth. So the other youth are either in waivered homes, or they are in, like, a group home setting, or they are in an independent living setting and extended foster care.
All right. I know we're going to talk a lot more about many of these issues later today, but I want to just give people a chance to just respond to, I have two questions, actually. One, like, what is one thing that you did differently this year that you are hoping to see positive change going forward? What is one thing that happened differently in the last year?
I could speak to a little bit of that. So I also oversee our contracted agencies who provide disability case management. And as we contract out more cases, there's just, there's more cases that are not being held internal. And we've had several cases this last year that raced to kind of crisis level and said, you know, we're not sure if they're going to be able to stay in the home. And so I've worked really hard with one of my lead staff and the other departments to come together routinely and just talk about it. And I think that wasn't something that we were always making time and space for, like you'd hear a little bit here or there, but we're really being intentional about everybody who's involved needs to come to the table, and we need to be there routinely, so we make sure we're not missing anything, and just really support one another throughout that, make sure we're following the law, but also being creative with our community resources. And I think that has made a big difference.
I would agree. I think the decision-making, you know, you have enough experience to know that this is a long-term struggle for this family and this child, and having them bounce into foster care and their PRT, up to a QRTP back in the home, into maybe JAF. Like, how do you prevent that? And how do you mainstream that? How do you work closely with CADDY, how to get them smirited, how to get them on the Men Choices Assessment? And then, you know, just, there's lots of hurdles to do that. Do we need a single-family home? And there's just lots of to-dos. Are we tracking our 10 denials? So I think we're doing a better job communicating internally, making quicker decisions, and then doing more frequent communication to ensure it's aligned and on track.
My answer to that question would be, I think, the continued development and in, of the child welfare work. So taking a look at, how do we hone in on the specific type of child welfare cases that is a voluntary prevention service outreach to target those high-risk populations from ever entering child protection? And what works, what's not working, and what do we do differently? And I think over the last year, we've looked at that differently around, how are, who are we going to respond? Who is going to respond? How are we going to respond? And what has been successful in that? So that would be something that I think we would continue, and hopefully see a decrease in long, deep-end placement services for youth.
I would say in the recruitment work, the engagement and kind of relationship building we're doing with community partners, whether that's in the faith community, the cultural communities, all of that, I think that's good work to do and important, because those folks don't typically interact with our systems. And so how do we build those relationships so that we can have those connections and maybe develop more of those informal services, or just reach different parts of the population through those organizations?
And I would say for us at the JAF, it's really recognizing that, yes, the JAF historically has been a correctional-type placement, but we, in the last few years, have seen so many kids who are coming to us from the social services, from child welfare, rather than kids who are coming because they have gotten any, like, legal trouble or connection with the juvenile justice system. So it's more of us internally taking a look at, what are we currently doing for the youth in our care, and how do we best help support them if it's meeting, like, their mental health needs, kind of some programmatic changes on what we're doing, just so that we can maybe prevent, like, further escalation into that continuum of care.
I would echo all of those things and say, from a big-picture perspective, really just continuing to try to break down those silos. So I think this group is a representation of some work that's been done to do that already within Scott County. And I think we're also doing some work to, at the state level, to lobby for some of that around some of the legislation, too, and just partner better together, because, again, our systems are really set up in ways that don't effectively serve kids and families when we're operating in those siloed departments.
Thank you. Matt, sure?
Wow, thank you. I'm sure I have a lot of notes written, and a lot of, you sparked a lot of additional conversations we need to have, so thank you for this work. Comments from my colleagues? Already asked a question. Go ahead.
Yeah, I wanted to go back to the recruiting, which I think was for foster care, because I hear that, I'm just curious, like, what does that look like? So you have nine kids, I think you said, or any, any number, it could be one, whatever. What does that recruiting look like? Because I'm just curious, like, I know they might not want to hear this, but like, how could we help in that? Like, what does that look like?
So for children who are, the term is freed for adoption, there is a state adoption exchange, and every youth or child is registered on that. And we have a worker who regularly reviews that website, and a lot of times, some home studies are people who are interested, based on what is talked about around the youth or child, is, they do an inquiry, and then the worker has a conversation about what it, who is this child, what are their needs? How do you, as the potential placement, fit into this child's life? And so it's really a thorough assessment of, can they meet this child's needs? And if we think that that's something that's a possibility, we start very slow. And we actually, depending on the age of the child, we'll talk to the child about, what is it that they want to see? We have some youth, while they are on the state adoption exchange, have voiced very clearly they don't want to be adopted. And we honor that, because they're almost 18 years old. And so we, while we have to do that formally, we are talking with them about, instead of being adopted and doing recruitment and finding somebody that may have not been in their life before, how do we maintain or form connections for them that they can continue to reach out to beyond 18? So that's our focus, rather than recruitment. But it is a very, it can be a very formal process through the state, and a lot of assessment, a lot of questions, and I would say a lot of judgment on our part, because we want to make sure that you are good enough for this youth or child that we have become attached to, because we frankly are their parent and know everything about them and want what's best for them. So it is a lot of questioning.
So the goal is to try to, so the database is sort of the central, or the number-one area at this point, so the goal is to get registered, or whatever, on that database, so the people are looking into it from throughout the state?
Yes. Yes, and also, I forgot to mention relatives.
Sure. Yeah, no, that's good. I know that's also.
I just wanted to do a little follow-up there with, and I think your question specifically, specifically was about foster care family recruitment, right? And I think there's a narrative out there, an old narrative, oh, which was true and stills true maybe a little bit of the time, "I'm going to be a foster care parent, I'm going to get a lovely, nice little baby who sleeps all night, that I can love and cuddle, or a nice five-year-old, we can go biking." And I think what we've learned over the decades is, if that child can stay home, they're going to stay home. The children entering our foster care system have some very critical needs that don't fit that narrative of, "Come and be a loving foster family." So how are we, how are we communicating the reality? I mean, first of all, the reality of it, that it's a lot harder than that narrative. But number two, that it's also that much more important and should be more rewarding, like, literally, life-saving, life-saving role, but the reality of what it means and what a day might look like with a child who needs placement in Scott County. Because I think that's a big deal. We can see the social media posts be like, "Sign up, be a foster parent, feels really good." But what do we do to communicate the reality of it?
I think that's some ongoing work, too, with the relationship building that Gretchen was talking about. So rather than just going in and doing a presentation around, "Hey, here's what foster care is, and here's what this is," this is ongoing meetings with certain community groups and faith-based organizations to really get a picture of that and try to figure out where people are at. And then specific cultural communities, too, right, related to making sure that our providers are representative of the kids who are needing foster care in Scott County. But that's that ongoing development, and that's why I think it's also difficult, because it doesn't happen overnight in that way, and it shouldn't, because it's so important, right? And we are seeing more of a trend of this disrupted permanency, is the term, or youth who have been adopted, and then the adoptive parents are like, "Oh, didn't know what I was signing up for, can't do this, it's too much," right? And that's the most traumatic thing. Those are the saddest stories that we see, really, on a regular basis, so. And then the other part is really also with these community partners, trying to build up those supports, in the same ways that we're doing for regular families, right? How do we make sure you have the right training? How do we make sure that you have a crisis number you can call where someone's actually going to respond to you at 2:00 a.m., when the child is having a tantrum or something is happening, right, or destroying their room? All of those things that are reasons why kids end up in placement are also reasons why it's tough to support foster care. So kind of, it's a parallel process, I guess, in that way.
Thank you. I didn't mean to hide.
No, no.
Go back to you.
Someone's got to clean it up, so I appreciate that. Another question, kind of talking about the industry changes, like, the at-home isn't there like it used to be. So now we're, you know, trying to, "Hey, how's it going? Things are great." So along with that, I know business is different than government, I get it, sort of, is there opportunities with that, where some providers or best practices that used to be no longer are, because the world's changing and there's new opportunities and new potential unknowns that could be good tools? And is that something that we, by we, I mean you, are seeing happen out there in that industry, in this world? Or not so much, not adapting as fast as business, which I get?
Yeah. I mean, I hate to bring up the workforce conversation again, but it's really a reality.
Yeah, it is real. It is real.
I don't think it's about not knowing what is, what are the best strategies or tactics or things that are needed, and it's more about having the resources to fulfill those needs. And I know that's not always the prettiest answer, but it is the reality, I think, in the way of who's going to provide those services and who's going to help, which is, again, why we try to build up family connections to do that, too, and it's always not pretty and perfect, either, with family members who have a lot going on, but it seems to be the most sustainable over time, right? Because it's a natural support.
And if it's billable, as a provider, if I'm a provider, and someone's going to make a referral to an in-home service, and I have an in-office business, it's a pretty big financial risk to drive, you know, road time, you know, hour and a half, and then have a no-show. So there's got to be more incentives to provide the in-home services.
People don't do this out of the, it only lasts so long. Thanks.
Commissioner, yeah?
No, I don't have any.
Wonderful. Couple things I want to highlight, and then maybe we can follow up. One thing, I'm just so glad that, you know, the folks from the different silos on the panel, and that you've been talking about that. And I challenge us, Lori in the room, she's not going to like this, but I really challenge us to think about our staffing, and I look at, think about, you know, Samantha's been in this position for a while, and I think used to be on our videos for future leaders and things like that, and we want you to keep doing child protection work, but we have people who do child protection work, who then become supervisors, become managers, and who do all this. Do we have some ways, as people need to transition and don't feel like they can do that work all the time, that they can still do some of the work and do some supervisory work? Is there possibilities where people like Melissa can be developmental disabilities caseworker and a child protection caseworker? I know, we don't usually do that, we stay in our silos, but just the work that you've talked about, let's really think about the infrastructure that we can also change on that level, as far as staffing, positions, union contract, I mean, there's a lot of things in there, but it could be really, really good, because it could be less duplication, and yes, I bet you, there's lots of people, lots of children in child protection who are also in developmental disabilities, and we need to just say, "Here's the truth, and we have this percentage of the population, let's serve them the best we can," instead of having four different caseworkers and programs and things they're doing. So I really appreciate that, and I hope in all your free time, you can think about what we need to change in the system to best promote that. I really appreciate this graphic, I think it helps us, and I think it's going to continue to help us as we talk about this issue at the legislature, because just in workshop earlier, I think for us, when we're going to talk about funding and appropriate funding for child protection and child welfare, we think, "Gosh, we have less kids in our home placement, why is this costing more?" And I need to understand, and we all need to understand more, we're doing, segue, story at legislature last year was, counties are bad, and they take kids away from the families, and nobody's placing with kin, and blah, blah, blah. Look, this is opposite of the story that was told at the legislature this, I mean, it was terribly opposite. And we need to be there being like, "Stop lying." Back to where it was. This family with supports, that costs us money and time, and we probably need to understand that, and then show and say, "Legislature, we're doing exactly what you're asking, and this costs some money." Finally, Suzanne's not here today, but she's like, "Barb, finally, you're getting what I'm trying to tell you," even though we have less kids in our home placement. So thank you. If nothing else, you helped me understand. home placement. So thank you. You, if nothing else, you helped me understand something that, and I won't ask Suzanne every other day to explain it again to me. So thank you. I have other comments, but I know we're short on time. Um, great panel, great conversation, very pertinent with the work we're, we're just starting to deal with on policy changes and funding. Anything else? All right. Thanks, everybody. And, uh, as you clear out, we'll get ready to go on to the consent agenda. If I can get my papers straight. All right. We'll be moving on to item number six on the agenda, the consent agenda. These 12 items on the consent agenda have already been, uh, workshopped and/or considered by planning commissions and hopefully are non-controversial in nature unless an item is removed for further consideration, discussion, or a separate vote. Um, they will be passed as one motion. I will read the items and then ask if any need to be pulled for, for separate consideration. 6.1 to adopt resolution number 2024-189 approving estimates of just compensation for right-of-way for the county highway 78 and 79 roundabout project. 6.2 to adopt resolution number 2024-199 authorizing entering into a contract with Charisoft for Acela software and implementation services from Burn Software Technologies. 6.3 adopt resolution number 2024-214 approving, approving entering an agreement for information technology security services. 6.4 adopt resolution number 2024-215 authorizing a budget amendment and entering an agreement with Ames Construction Incorporated for the Merriam-Junction Trail Project upon determination of full contract compliance. 6.5 to adopt resolution number 2024-219 authorizing application for a safe and secure courthouse initiative grant and if awarded, accepting the grant and entering into an agreement with the Minnesota Judicial Branch State Court Administrator's Office. 6.6 adopt resolution number 2024-224 authorizing a fourth amendment to the SRF Consulting Group Incorporated Agreement for Design Services for Merriam-Junction Trail Project. 6.7 to adopt resolution number 2024-227 authorizing amending the budget for utilization of American Rescue Plan Act funds and entering an amendment to the agreement with SM Henches and Sons for the Marine Edition Housing Trust Project. 6.8 adopt resolution number 2024-232 rejecting all August 8th, 2024 bids for the Public Safety Radio System Equipment Shelters Project. 6.9 adopt resolution number 2024-233 rejecting all August 12th, 2024 bids for the Public Safety Radio System Site Preparations Project. 6.10 approve the lawful gambling off-site permit application for Jordan Booster Club in Sand Creek Township on February 1st, 2025. 6.11 approve a payroll processing and personnel actions. 6.12 approve record of disbursements and approve claims. Colleagues, we have 12 items on consent. Are there any you'd like pulled for separate discussion and consideration?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carried. Thank you. We are now on to our one non-consent agenda item. Welcome, friends. We have, uh, lots of friends here and I think, um, you should be thankful that we put you later on the agenda because I know you don't like early mornings. So you're welcome. Brad Davis, I think is going to, um, start us off on this item. Welcome and thank you, Brad.
Hello, commissioners. Madam Chair, thank you. I'm going to use the document camera here. Yeah, Brad Davis, Planning Director of Scott County. So, uh, as you mentioned, Mid-America Festivals is requesting modifications to two of the conditions that were set in their permit last year when we worked to update their permit. One of those modifications would be to reset the price of the at-the-gate, uh, ticket price for a parking voucher, parking voucher price. And the second would allow their professional parking company to sell daily parking passes in a number equal to the number of vehicles that leave the site with continuous monitoring beginning in the afternoon on those festival days when they reach their, uh, maximum amount of parking passes that they can sell, which is, uh, at 7,000. So I think this board is familiar with, uh, the location of, uh, the Renaissance Festival. As you know, it's a popular event, uh, held August through October. They had their opening weekend just this past weekend and runs through early October. Festival draws about 300,000 visitors per year. Um, it's been at its current location in Louisville Township since the 1970s. I think 1973, it started in this location. Access to the festival grounds, uh, you enter the grounds in two, two locations. Uh, from the south, you, uh, go off 169 and onto Red Rock Drive and then 145th Street to access some of the southern parking areas, uh, commonly called the King's Lots. And then from the north off of 41 and a drive-in, uh, accessing what are called the Queen's Lots and some other, uh, additional parking lots. So we'll take these one at a time. Uh, when it comes to the price of the at-the-gate parking pass, just a little bit of background. Last year, um, was the first time that the Renaissance Festival charged patrons to park on site. Uh, the price of a pre-purchased online parking pass was $10. So that, uh, if someone showed up without buying that pre-purchased parking pass and wanted to enter, those patrons would then have to pay $30. Um, this upcoming season, Mid-America Festivals has raised the price of their online parking pass to $15. And because what we built into the condition that the, the at-the-gate would need to be three times greater than what's, uh, the price online, that would then set the at-the-gate at $45. Um, a little bit in your packet, we talked about some data that looks at, um, how many people purchased tickets online last year versus those that showed up at the gate. Uh, in your packet is a, a good table of data that provides, um, that information, prepaid passes versus the day of sales. And that's what I refer to as at-the-gate. And you can see that last year, about 80% of patrons did purchase prepaid passes and about 20% bottom at-the-gate or day of sale. So roughly 80, 80%, 20%. Um, it's stated in the condition itself, when you look at, uh, their CUP, the reason that the county set the at-the-gate price or day of sale price to be three times the price of a pre-purchased pass was to disincentivize patrons arriving to the site without a valid parking pass. Uh, Mid-America Festival believes when you look at their application for this amendment, raising the price of a pre-purchased parking pass to $15 will also serve as, uh, an incentive for some patrons to take transit. Um, if you want to know what it takes to ride transit, last year, a patron, um, spent $5 per person to, uh, take the bus or transit into the site. This season now, the cost for transit will be $6 per person.
What, what is that 929? Yeah, that lower right-hand corner. What is that number?
You know, it appears to be the, the total transactions at a peak hour. Um, and it looks like, so the peak hour was 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM, I believe, during last year's festival season. It showed the, the amount of, um, total transactions. I'd, I'm, I'm not sure. I'd, we'd have to ask the applicant exactly what that column is representing.
Oh, okay.
So what Mid-America Festival is saying that with this escalator that we built into the condition, the three times, um, charging $45 at the gate is too on high and unfair to what is predominantly a lot of family attendees that come to the, to the festival. They want to keep that at-the-gate price at $30. So continue that price. And in order to do that, we would need to, need to change that escalator of two times instead of three times, um, to make that happen. Um, county staff does recommend approval of this modification and, uh, we'll move on to the second request. So as you know, under the current CUP, the maximum number of parking tickets or vouchers that Mid-America is allowed to issue each day for the Renaissance Festival is either set at 5,000 vehicles or 7,000 vehicles if three dependencies are met each year. And, uh, this year they've met all three dependencies. So they can go to 7,000 vehicles. There is no allowance in the CUP for what we've called backfilling or reselling or replenishing this maximum number throughout the day. If there are certain festival days when they've, they've reached their maximum, either because they've sold out their prepaid passes or the day of sale units or, uh, patrons have arrived and they've reached that 7,000. But it could still, uh, happen by midday and many of those patrons may then leave by early afternoon, uh, then opening up stalls in the parking space. And then patrons who arrive in the afternoon learn that they are not allowed to park because they've reached their 7,000 maximum. There's also a number of, um, people who purchase prepaid passes online but do not actually go that day to the festival. These are considered no-shows. You can see that no-show rate, uh, also on this table, um, varied from 22% to 6%. But on average throughout all festival weekends, it's about 11% of patrons who are considered no-shows.
So, Madam Chair, Brad, on that first hour, no-show rate, 22% of prepaid passes, 2061, 22, 440 forfeited their dollars. And is that correct? Do you believe?
I don't, I have not done the, the calculations on what the 22%.
You think that too? Okay. 450 or something. Okay. All right.
So what is being proposed is that the number of vehicles that would be eligible to be, uh, replenished or backfilled or, or repark would be a number equal to the number of vehicles that leave the site. So, um, the professional parking company does do a good job monitoring all vehicles that are entering and exiting the property. So they do have a good handle on, on those numbers at any time. Um, it's staff's understanding that the intent of this proposed revision would establish that no more than 7,000 vehicles would be allowed on the site at any one time. That's the difference between a daily maximum and a, at any one time maximum. So another piece of information that's provided in the packet deals with, um, the turnover rate of the parking lots at the festival. Again, given all the good data that is collected, they were able to provide, um, these two charts that are included in the application, also in your packet, showing, um, when during the day typically you see that turnover. And that's a period when there are more vehicles exiting the festival site than entering the festival site. So in 2022, on the top graph, you see the turnover period was around, uh, 1:00 PM. Again, that's.
So that, uh, Madam Chair, so that rate where that, that's what time is that?
Roughly around 1:00 PM, I think, in the 2022. And then the, the lower graph has very similar data, again, where the.
That's just before noon or just before 1:00?
About 12:45 is what I.
12:45, quarter to 1:00.
Yep. Um, again, it's important to point out that the peak ingress, that's the peak period hour when most people are arriving at the festival is about 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM. So it's these two data sets that the applicant used to propose that this, uh, backfill or replenishment of the parking lot should occur after 1:30 PM. Staff, however, has recommended an hour later and start backfilling at 2:30 PM. And I can get into more detail of where that staff recommendation comes from. Couple other important points. Um, the applicant has informed staff that this backfill or replenishment allowance would not be advertised to the general public. They have told staff they will not put on their website that, hey, if you show up after a certain time and we haven't sold out, you can park here. That would not be advertised. It would only happen when patrons showing up without a pre-purchased parking pass on those limited days when they did reach their 7,000, they would then be allowed in. The reasons why they think that's a benefit is it, um, it, um, that means that those patrons aren't stopped for a period of time, um, asked to then turn around and go back into the, the traffic that's behind them that's trying to come into the site. And that then causes delays getting other vehicles into the property. So I said the limited days when, when they've sold out, uh, at their max, uh, this happened twice last season. When you look at the, back at that data, um, it happened on September 16th and again on September 30th last year when, uh, Mid-America hit their maximum 7,000 parking pass total. However, there were two other days when they got close, they sold what appeared to be 6,500 passes. So that gives you a, a kind of context of how often this replenishment policy would presumably kick in two to four festival days. So, um, a couple of other things, we, um, we looked at, um, kind of how would we track this data? We, we know that, uh, the professional parking company interstate does, as I said, a good job monitoring the ingress and egress. We'd want to make sure that, uh, if this proposal does get approved, they would be able to report the number of backfilled vehicles, uh, when they provide us their after-season report, uh, and include it perhaps in a table that they've provided last season. That's one of the conditions that we require that after action reporting. So we'll talk a little bit about, um, the difference between staff's recommendation, uh, beginning that replenishment after 2:30 versus the applicant's request for 1:30. It's an hour difference, but it seems to be really important to the applicants. I want to make sure we spend time with that. We can discuss it. So county staff recommends beginning, uh, again, this replenishment after 2:30. We base that off of, uh, some of the data that was in images that were provided, uh, in the application and also included in your packet. So these were drone images, um, taken during, uh, certain events last year and the, the date stamp is shown, um, on these. And it shows at certain times what the different parking lots look like. And, um, this image here, um.
Brad, could you make it a little bit larger? We.
Yeah.
I can see it good.
Yep.
And I'm blind, by the way. Okay. There you go.
Images of the, um, King's Lot, um, taken on, trying to remember here, the left and middle King's Lot. This was during week five, um, showing the condition of the parking lot at 1:51 PM on that day. And again, at 2:29 PM that day. And it was staff's, uh, looking at these types of images that concluded that it appeared to us that would be a little more efficient to start replenishing the parking lot on that time period around 2:29 when you have a lot of, um, spaces available to park those vehicles versus, uh, a time period that it appears you'd still be looking for certain rooms and stalls to then park those vehicles.
Brad, is this the same Saturday that those, that bottom left and then that middle? Those aren't the same?
Two, two different Saturdays. One is week five.
What's, what?
The one on the left is week five.
I see. Okay. Yeah. Okay. That's what those mean. I see. Okay.
Another image that was provided that just showed again, this was, uh, that, that one, one of two days last year where they did reach their maximum 7,000 vehicles. So the capacity was met at, it looks like 12:15 that day. And again, you can see it in different images of the, uh, King's Lot taken at 108, 156, and 159. And it was getting, these types of images just led staff to believe that it appeared that if you gave, um, the turnover an additional hour to, uh, have vehicles exit the site, you'd have more space, larger pockets of space to park those vehicles. have more space, larger pockets of space to park those vehicles. So, a public hearing was held on this request a week ago, on August 12th. Some items that were raised during this hearing included questions on, well, what are the methods to replenish parking stalls without creating internal congestion? What is the fallback plan if replenishment of the vehicles creates traffic impacts? And what are some of the enhanced transit service plans for the upcoming season? So, I'll go through each of those questions, so we had, I think, good discussion on all three of those. In response to the methods to replenish stalls without creating internal congestion, the representative from the professional parking company stated with their experience and a number of parking attendants on-site, they would be able to identify larger pockets of empty parking stalls and rows to backfill in such a way that they would not create internal congestion. So, I think the bottom line is there, professional parking company felt with their experience, they can replenish a parking lot without creating internal confusion, or congestion, or disruption. In response to what is the fallback plan if this doesn't work out and it creates a traffic impact? Mid-America Festivals did state in their application, and we spoke into the record at our public hearing, that Mid-America Festival is willing to agree that if county staff, at their sole discretion, determines that this change, allowing the backfill or replenishment of vehicles in the afternoon, is having a negative impact, and that Mid-America Festival cannot resolve the issue before the following weekend, Mid-America Festival unilaterally stop this change and return to the original condition. So, in response to what are the enhanced transit service plans, it's, it's really good news. They've now added Southwest Transit as a, as a transit provider for this season. I think that's really great news, and this map shows the park-and-ride lots that Southwest Station, or excuse me, Southwest Transit will begin utilizing, and I believe begin utilizing this past weekend, and for the duration of the festivals. So, providing service now down the 212 corridor, you can see the locations, the different park-and-ride lots. And also in their traffic management plan, provided an updated table like this, that just shows how many bus trips will be provided from the different park-and-ride lots throughout the festival. And again, notably adding now Southwest Transit to that table, showing locations at the Southwest Station, the Southwest Village, the Carver Station, and the East Creek Station.
If I could ask a question here.
Go ahead.
Does this just represent different providers, or more capacity? Because I know that, didn't they use like Richfield Transit, or Richfield Bus Company, or some? In other words, is this more capacity, or is it just different providers?
To my knowledge, it's more capacity, but we can ask, if, if the question does need to be answered, we could, we could ask the applicant to answer that. Another thing notable at the public hearing, the applicant stated that they would have preferred not to have any set time, so we spent a lot of time talking about 1:30 or 2:30. I think the applicant wants to go on record saying that they would have preferred not to have any set time to allow backfilling, as that traffic ingress and egress can be dictated day-to-day, either by weather conditions or other events, really dictates when people are going to decide to come to the festival. Not all days do they come between 9:00 and 10:00 because of the forecast, or for other reasons. So, they would prefer not to have any set time, and would prefer the professional parking company determine when it's most efficient to start backfilling.
If I could ask another question here?
Yep.
Okay, let's say you're in line. What's going to prevent someone saying, well, it's full now, but if you just sit here and wait five minutes, somebody will leave, you know, and then have a lot of stacking? What would prevent that?
There would be nothing that would prevent that. Yeah, if we do have a set time, that is a possible scenario.
And Madam Chair, some weekends, it doesn't, it wouldn't matter at all if they did, right? Most of the weekends, right? So, but some weekends, it would matter a lot, right?
If you could repeat your question, what would matter a lot?
Well, some weekends, you could just have cars come and go all the time. It looks like it may not be full all the time. And there's, well, how many days do you think that's actually full or near capacity?
Right, well, last year's season showed that there was two days that they reached their capacity.
Yep.
And there was two other days where they were 500 short of their capacity.
And that was two days of where people bought passes, and of that, it was possibly 6% of the 7,420 probably didn't even show up.
Presumably, yeah.
And do we account for that or not?
It's, it's shown in the tables. I'm not sure how we account for it. So, I'll just wrap up here, just the recommendations. So, Louisville Town Board did recommend approval of both of these modifications as proposed, so they did agree with the 1:30 start time. They did that at their July 11th, 2024 meeting. MINDOT was contacted about this. We have two or three staff from MINDOT that have been on the traffic management group, and have been kind of following this along for the last several years. They reviewed this amendment and identified no concerns. After closing the public hearing, the planning commission recommended approval of the modifications. They did go with staff's recommendation to start the replenishment at 2:30, instead of the applicant's requested 1:30. So, with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for Brad, Commissioner Brennan.
I have a question. In the current CUP, and we talked about this in Section 26, there are certain timeframes that the plans have to be submitted to us, and that's April. So, was this plan included in that plan, or at what point did we start looking at this as a, as a possibility?
Yep. Yeah, the applicant did meet the timelines. They did submit their traffic management plan by April 30th. It was part of the cover letter, or part of the information that was provided with that submitted, that there was a desire to make these modifications. So, we were first informally informed around that time, and then on June 24th, they submitted a formal application to amend their conditional use permit.
I have another question, and it is in regards to what Mr. Wolf has said regarding at what point, at what point is a no-show considered a no-show? And can you fill those tickets and double sell them? I mean, if somebody can come in at, at the end of the day and use their ticket, are they considered a no-show, and we're going to fill that spot? Or, or are they? I think I'm clear. At what point are they considered a no-show, and their ticket is going to be filled?
Yeah, it's my understanding that it was only on those two days when they sold out their 7,000 tickets, whether they showed up or not, they had sold out. And that was then the maximum number. They weren't allowed to refill those tickets. Now, on the other festival days, when they didn't reach 7,000, they still had capacity to, or they still had tickets to sell. I'm assuming that when someone came up to the gates, and they weren't at their 7,000, they were allowed in, and that just got one more closer to the 7,000. I don't think they were factoring in the no-show rate. They were just, they know that they can't sell more than 7,000 tickets, whether people didn't show up or not. So, I'm not sure if I answered that question, Commissioner, but.
So, sorry.
Go ahead, Commissioner Brennan.
I think to clarify it, if this proposal moves forward, at what point would a no, a no-show ticket be considered a no-show? I'm assuming that it can't be on the same day, because they show up at, you know, half an hour before the closing. So, are they considering that, up to 7% of tickets as a no-show, as a, as a no-show that they can fill?
Yeah, I think I'm, I'm going to try to answer your question, Commissioner. I believe if, if someone purchased a ticket for a festival day, and they had not shown up by 1:30 or 2:30, in this proposal passed, they would be allowed in, because we're not, we're not trying to keep that 7,000 max anymore. It's now open for whoever shows up after that time period.
Could that help?
I, if you, it feels like you're coming down a line of questions that the applicant might be better to answer, than I'm trying to guess how they're going to manage that.
Okay, and, and we will give the applicant time to speak. I just want to clarify, Commissioner Brennan, so I think what you're getting at is, let's say at 1:30 or 2:30, they're allowed to fill empty spots. How do we know if there's 500 people still coming who bought a parking pass, that there's enough for those people? I, and that's, that, I think the applicant can address that, but I think what you're saying, Brad, is we don't. If we open this up, that is a possibility. Is that what you're saying?
A possibility.
Thank you. Commissioner Wolf.
Thank you. So, it's maybe a different way of compromise on, I'm throwing a different thing out here. Instead of 7,000, if we move to 7,500, which, of the 7,500, 450, according to the 6%, probably aren't going to show up. And if they did, I'm guessing you guys have an extra 500 spots. Is that, I see, okay. So, I'm, I'm just throwing that out there, and then maybe keep it at 2:30? I don't know. I'm done.
Are you the applicant now?
What's that?
Are you the applicant?
No, I'm not. I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I'm just looking at it a different way, you know what I mean?
I think Jeannie was going to say something.
Uh-oh.
Okay.
No, I'm in trouble.
Madam Chair, I have a comment.
All right. We'll come back to you after I give these two a chance. Go ahead, Commissioner.
This is a comment to Brad. Brad, it was difficult to analyze what you presented to us. You know, I hope that when, if we review this next year, we have the same lot, the same day, the same time, you know? This is lot X, and at 12, and this is that same date, this is the same lot. We had different dates and different times, different lots. It was really hard to make a comparison. I think we need to standardize the data, so that we can have a clearer analysis of that.
Thank you for the comment. Commissioner Beer, as a segue to that.
Yeah, this brings up a good point. So, for our tens and tens of viewers, or ones and ones, I don't know what it is, maybe we need to back, because that, like, I, I don't want to be in the business of, I don't want to be in the businesses' business. So, can you remind us all, all of our viewers, why are we even here, talking about this? What was the genesis of this?
Sure. Madam Chair, Commissioners, so, two years ago, we witnessed a lot of traffic backups, and traffic congestion, and issues getting into the festival site during some of their busiest days. We spent some workshops and time trying to evaluate how we were going to address those traffic impacts, both to businesses and private property owners around the festival site. So, we then went through a process of working with the applicant to update their conditional use permit, and really tried to focus on how do we disincentivize patrons driving to the site and parking on the site, and how do we get more patrons coming to the site from shelves, buses, and other means? That was the primary focus of working with the applicant, and I think the applicant then made great strides to, to bring more shuttle service, or for the first time, really, any shuttle service into the festival site. We looked at some traffic modeling that their consultant looked at, kind of what's the the peak capacity of getting vehicles in and out of the site? They had different models that they looked at, based on the number of lanes coming in, and some of those things. And they modeled 5,000 vehicles, 8,000 vehicles, and I think maybe 10,000 vehicles. Looked at the different impacts those would have, and then we settled on 7,000 as their maximum, that we felt the, the site could handle. We've got a year's worth of data under our belt. I think a lot of us felt like we wanted a couple of years of data before we were here talking about a change in the conditions, but the applicant has a right to apply, and that's kind of what brought us here today.
So, yeah, I think I've been here eight years, which feels like a lot longer, but I remember this being a concern predating my time here. And so, we had to act, we, applicant had to act, because there were citizens coming to us. I mean, this, this by far has clogged my voicemail and email than any other issue. And we've had some doozies throughout the county. And then last year, when this all happened, and spent a lot of taxpayer money on this, boy, high praise. Things were good. Township was, was happy. Things were really, really good, which is awesome. And yeah, to your point, it'd be nice to make sure that continues. I want to sell more turkey legs. I'm not involved with that, but I was always in line last year, selling more turkey legs. So, things did go well last year, and it'd be great to have that continue, to be a success for a business that's been here a long time. But I just wanted that reminder for us all, why we're here in the first place, public safety and keeping the roads clear. We want to make sure patio furniture gets in and out, which I think was an issue last year, and birthday parties for grandkids, and whatever.
Thank you. And other questions for Brad? Let's.
If we move forward with this CUP amendment, is this going to be reviewed again to see if it was successful or not? Because I know they have to submit their plans in April. I know that we have a review period right after the festival is completed. I guess that's what I'm asking. Do we have that time?
Yes, Commissioner, Madam Chair, yes. So, after every season, we do get an after-action report. A traffic management group gets together, takes a look at that report, look at the data, what were any issues. We use that information to inform next year's traffic management plan. When it comes to the CUP itself, whatever gets amended here would stick, and it would stay, and the county could not unilaterally reopen the CUP next year. If we wanted to make some changes, we'd have to work with the applicant to do that. There's only one condition that allows the county to unilaterally do something, and that's condition, I don't remember the number, but it's a condition that would allow the county board unilaterally to reduce the 7,000 maximum. That's the only thing that the county could do unilaterally. Otherwise, we work with the applicant on any amendments.
All right, thank you. This is not a public hearing, but I am, at this time, I try not to, but going against my county administrator's advice all the time here, about allowing the applicant a moment to, to chat and answer a couple of our questions. And I indicated to the Louisville Township representatives here, I will allow you a moment. And please, we have all the information, we've watched a planning commission meeting. For the applicant, the one question I heard that we still want to answer, that I think is important to this board, is if the information that was given about transit actually added more transit capacity this year, or just more locations? And, and if it added more capacity, if you could tell us a little bit about how much more? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners, Madam Chair. John Mask with SRF Consulting, and Tony Janowick with Interstate Parking were the two companies that were hired by MAF to help solve the problem and keep track of traffic off the streets. In direct response to your question about transit, Southwest Transit was not a party last year to the Renaissance Festival. They had staffing issues, couldn't do that. This year, they have come on board. So, we have Richfield and Lorenz that operate out of the Canterbury lot, which is, they operated that last year. We also operate to Scott County Fairgrounds, which we are not doing this year. With Southwest Transit coming onboard, we did not feel necessary to do that. Southwest Transit brought four additional park-and-ride lots, all west of the river, to the table, to play. And then Minnesota Valley, and, and they did it for all seven weeks. So, they're operating those transit park-and-rides even during the state fair. Minnesota Valley Transit is again a partner. They're operating one transit location, Eagle Creek, until Week 4, after the state fair, when they add two additional. So, we actually have three additional park-and-ride facilities this year. If you, if you really want to look at it this way, we dropped the South Lot, the Scott County Fairgrounds, and we added four park-and-ride lots west of the river to come forward.
An increased number of buses. I think the question is, is there more buses running?
There are more buses running, and Southwest is running two different routes out of those four park-and-rides for the opening weekend for this year. I just talked with Stephanie Alexander, their bus director. They were very happy with how it went in Week 1. I believe they said their ridership was 500 on. I believe they said their ridership was 500 on Saturday, 600 on Sunday. Minnesota Valley Transit, who was just operating out of Eagle Creek, this is their second year of promotion, their ridership was up 20%. They had 900 operating, or 900 on Saturday, almost 800 on Sunday. And then Canterbury, which was Richfield, Lorenz, they were up as well. They had about a little over 1,100, almost 1,150 on Saturday, and just over 1,000 on Sunday. What does that correspond to? On Saturday, about 24% of the patrons or guests that came to the Renaissance came via transit. On Sunday, it was about 30%. So the transit is being promoted. Southwest Transit's done a lot. They're offering a two-for-one. Buy a ticket to the Renaissance, you get a free ride to the fair, or vice versa. And promoting it very well from that end, and we'll see how the season progresses.
I'm just going to stop you there. Did that answer your question, Commissioner Allerick?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
As a transportation professional, I'm the one who kind of orchestrated putting the plan together. There were three times last year that we ended up with traffic out on the 169. Opening day, which I credit that to opening day startup things for the first time, that happened for about 20 minutes right away on that Saturday. We did not have an issue related to operations after that. The second time was related to a train that blocked the crossing for about an hour. That backed up to 169, and there was really nothing we could do about that. We also had a train this weekend at 8:30 in the morning on Saturday that caused a backup on the 169. But again, nothing we can do about that despite our efforts to deal with that. The third time we had traffic backing up on the 169 was the day that we basically shut down the lot and said that we're full, that we can't take anymore. And there was a transition period trying to educate the drivers, you got to check passes, because if they had a prepaid pass, they're allowed in. If not, and it took about a half hour to get things sorted out and get people doing what they should be doing, that time it backed up on the 169. So Planning Director Davis didn't mention September 16th that we did. There were two days that we sold above, or we reached the 700 limit during the first week. Interstate parking kind of misunderstood. They did sell the no-show to fill because they thought since they're not there, that they would fill them in review. And we did the numbers. Bo Beller actually did send a letter to both Interstate Parking and us, saying we are limited to 7,000, period, passes sold, or whatever. We did not have any traffic backups or anything on that day that we went over and did the no-shows. The day that we did was on the 26th, when we did do the hard cutoff, which meant the no-show spaces, you know, weren't there either. That was when we backed up. And then both the bus companies, the bus drivers, we moved most people down to Scott County Fairgrounds. They received a lot of negative comments on the way, when they came back, we had to put them back into the traffic mix. They went down, they got on a bus, and they came back, and about 40% of the lot was empty. And they're saying, what the H? You know, we got an empty lot, and you're telling me we can't park here? And, you know, from my perspective, I've dealt with traffic flows at the state fair, CHS Field, the XL Energy Center, et cetera. We tried to get people parked and not enter them back into the mix, which is what we were doing here. They're coming, then we're turning them around and sending them out to bring them back in a different way. So we thought this was one area that we thought we could better the overall plan by not having, you know, traffic backing up on the streets, which is our ultimate goal, to do that, and working with Interstate Parking. And they can answer the direct onsite parking questions that you may have. By working with them, they really did it. This is the only place that they have a limit, that they can't park cars type of thing. And they really wanted no limit. As Planning Director Davis pointed out, through negotiations and talking, that probably wasn't going to be acceptable. And we, looking at the graphs and things like that, came up with 1:30 as being the time that we would propose. We even think that's a little bit late, but being, trying to strike a middle ground, we ended at the 1:30, saying that this will at least help at this point. So when we got to the 2:30, that kind of pushed it out of the benefit area of when we had any kind of onsite benefit. So I was actually surprised at the planning commission meeting, because it sounded like it was going to go for the 1:30, which was what we said we would accept, and then it went to 2:30. But that, I mean, I can answer any other traffic flow questions, but parking would be Tony.
Let's just see if there's other questions. I think it's clear the applicant is in support of the amendment, but you would like 1:30. That's what you've been saying. All right. Other questions for the applicant? Any? I mean, I feel like our questions have been answered. Remember your time limit? Third.
Bob Peever from Louisville Township. I need one clarification from Brad. He mentioned that our staff recommendation from the township was at 1:30, and it would go over 7,000 cars. That was not our recommendation. Our recommendation came from, we negotiated with them in our township meeting, we agreed that we'd stay at the 7,000, and that the township would support getting the 1:30 instead of the 2:30. I'm going to give you a little bit why I'm there. Last year, I spent 20 hours observing, watching, learning on everything that went on in their parking lots and stuff to keep the traffic off of our roads. The days where they reached that 7,000, or got real close to that 7,000, the cars coming in were backed up so far in the parking lot that the cars coming in, the cars going out, and not being able to fill the front just congested everything. So they need, they need the ability to keep traffic moving to stay off of our township road. By going to 1:30, I believe that will help tremendously. You can shake your head if you like. Go ahead.
Bob, I'm just going to ask, I don't know how many hours you've spent talking to me over the last 10 years about traffic.
A lot.
We're in year two of our plan, right? But what about more transit? So if those people between 1:30 and 2:30 were utilizing transit, which is, go back to what Commissioner Beer originally said, it was, if we had no parking, it'd be awesome if everybody came in by transit, which is what the state fair has basically moved to. But you could do that by incentivizing more traffic as well, right? And so I think that's part of the discussion here, is do you want to incentivize more cars? Or do you want to incentivize more transit?
I am not asking for more cars. I said 7,000 is the total. The more people learn about the bus service, I watched the buses come in this first weekend, and they were at least three-quarters full. People are starting to realize, okay, it's easier to ride the bus. But to penalize the parking company who is dealing with the cars and not letting them do their job isn't going to create more bus ridership. They still have to handle the cars that are coming in so they can get them off the township road.
So, Bob, township recommendation was 1:30, keep at the 7,000 limit?
Correct.
Thank you. I think, I think everybody, that's good. Any other questions for the township? Great.
Thank you very much for listening.
Yeah. Colleagues, thoughts, questions, discussion?
I will just say, I was at the planning commission too, and it seemed like everybody was leaning towards and shaking their head on the 1:30. And then I believe in the, in the planning commission's paperwork, there was a sample motion that said 2:30, and I think that's what was read, and I think that is how it ended up at 2:30. That's just my opinion. There's a lot of people that agree on that, too. So anyhow, that's all I'll say.
Commissioner Beer.
Yeah, I just want to double down. This has been years with the traffic issues. And so this is year one of, like, things going pretty darn good. And so as I'm looking out at some that have been on both sides of this fence now in the year, like, we're thinking of you. We want to make sure that public safety can get in and out of these roads. We're thinking of all the people going to the festival, public safety. I mean, if they come in by airplane, like, I don't really care. Just we need to have roads accessible for the citizens. And so that's my, really my main concern. Like, I don't want to be dealing with this again. I really don't. That you guys are happy, citizens are happy, that this plan is working, everyone's making money, festival-goers are having a great time. Ambulances can get in and out, patio people can get in and out, grandparents can get to their grandkids. I mean, just the stuff that we do on a weekend in Minnesota. So whatever's the best way of doing that, I'm good with. I just, there's been years of trying to get here. So I don't want to lose that.
You'd say what?
I'm just wanting to make sure that we're, you know, remembering.
Thank you.
Brad, could you, could you clarify the, if we went to 1:30 and we determined it's not, that didn't work? They said they would go back to the 2:30 or what? There was some, something concession that they would go back to the original if it wasn't working. But you also said that if we amended, I thought you said if we amended to 1:30, that we can't touch that later on. So that those two seem kind of inconsistent with each other.
Yeah, Commissioner Allerick, I'll try to answer them one at a time. You're right that the applicant has stated publicly that if this does create an issue and they can't solve it before the next weekend, they will no longer replenish vehicles like it's set up today. That's what they've stated publicly, and I believe, I believe them when they say that. And so if we have issues and we notify them and they can't correct them, I honestly believe they will then stop replenishing on their own. So that's part of the answer. The other question is, if we do amend this today and it's at 1:30, that stays in the books? I mean, that's, that's now allowed this year, it's allowed next year, it's allowed the year after that, it's allowed as long as that amendment, or like, the CUP condition stays in place.
Okay, I'm going to follow up with that. Could we just put it in there, it's amended to 1:30 for this calendar year only?
Commissioner, Madam Chair, I have not ever thought of that proposal, but presumably it could, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Beer. Okay. I thought you had one more.
Yeah. I did, I just, yeah.
You don't want to say it.
No, I don't.
I'm just going to say, I support the 1:30 this year only.
And so then they'd have to reapply next year after seeing how it went?
Correct.
So it's a temporary amendment?
Yes.
Any problem with that? I mean, I'm not saying that's what we're doing, but I just, if that's an option being discussed.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, no, I don't think so. You are allowed to make modifications for what's being asked for as you see fit, and I don't think that's too far afield for modification.
Thank you. Other comments?
I don't, I agree with what Commissioner Allerick says. I also would want to make sure that when we have a plan date that we want to see in April, that any modifications of the plan has to be included with that submission in April. I do support the work that the staff has done on this, and I do support their recommendation. But I would like to include that caveat of a one-year trial period, because we did also deal with, through a lot of work, as Commissioner Beer said, to get this in place last year. And I don't want to undo everything. I'd like to see what happens and give it a one-year.
All right. I haven't heard a motion. Do we desire any action? Do we have, do you have a formal? I have it up here.
But we have to put the number in ourselves.
Well, you have to say the change. I had it up right here. Again. So here is 32. I'll agree on, 2 is right here, 2:30, so it would have to be a change to that, plus the contingency, if that's what you wanted.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2024-218, approving an amendment to Condition 31 and 32 of the conditional use permit, permit to last for a one-year period and to be reviewed in April with the other plans that are submitted. And Number 616-C-8 to operate the Minnesota Renaissance Festival, Min America Festivals Corporation applicant in Section 1621, 2829 of Louisville Township.
Is that written there?
As, as, Section Number 32 being amended to, of the amendment to stay 2:30 instead of 1:30.
Wait a minute, we were saying 1:30.
1:30.
1:30.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
You said it the opposite.
Oh, I do mean 1:30, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right.
So Commissioners, on the screen, it's okay, on the screen I have a mock-up of what Condition 32 would look like. The new language is underlined. What I'm hearing the motion say is that it would say beginning at 1:30 PM, and then in addition to that, it would say beginning at 1:30 PM for the 2024 season.
Right.
Thank you.
That's, that's what I did try to say. Thank you for clarifying it. And I also want to make sure that any modifications to plans going forward are included in the April submission.
I'll do the easy part, second.
Okay. So I'm moved and seconded to adopt this resolution with the change of beginning at 1:30 and for the 2024 season. Discussion.
The only point, Brad, did you talk about if there was some sort of a hiccup, that that would be changed, like, this season yet? Was that, there was some public comment? Like, does that need to be in part of the motion?
I have two thoughts on that. I think it's been publicly stated by the applicant that they will do that, and I believe we can honor that commitment that they're making. I don't think we need to memorialize that. In the permit, I'll defer if someone else has a different opinion, that we should memorialize that. I didn't recommend that we had to memorialize that. But as a board, if you feel like you want that written, then we would need to add that language probably in this condition.
My discussion would be, I do think that's important. I saw some heads nod over there. I am less concerned about memorializing it for the 2024 season, because obviously, if there's a problem, this board probably is not going to entertain any continuance. So just me adding something. Other, who had something?
One last question. We see Mr. Parker, Mr. Interstate. You're still online for this season, or, yeah, okay.
How many years, or how long's your contract?
I think it's perpetual, isn't it?
Nice.
I think it's five years.
Five years. So it says year two.
Because I did see some very straight lines in those pictures, and lots of cars utilizing space.
They were better than we were.
And that was just an observation, not a judgment, just that, yeah, look tight.
Some things work? Yeah.
Other discussion? There's a motion to second. Any other discussion? Any further discussion?
All right. All in favor of the motion as described? I think we all... All right. All in favor of the motion as described? I think we all have a good understanding of the change of 130 for the 2024 season. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carried.
Thank you.
It wasn't, it wasn't revised. I'm sorry. Madam Chair, Commissioners, were we clear about adopting the parking fee change as well?
Yes, because that was part of the resolution. I think she, she said 31 and 32.
Yep.
Hopefully.
Yep.
True?
Yep.
True. Okay.
We'll call them temporary for the following year.
Yep. All right, we'll move on to committee reports and Commissioner updates.
She's asking for them in writing.
Is that okay, or do you guys want to?
Either way.
Let's just do highlights. You submitted right here, Bo. I want to give you an opportunity if there's any highlights. Commissioner Wolf.
I am just gonna have one highlight. On the 15th, I had the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, the SWAC. And in there, the one thing that was very enlightening to me was batteries, lithium batteries. They're in your phones, your power drills, your little lights, anything that charges up, they use that lithium. In Belle Plaine, from what Nick had told me, that's kind of runs that committee, two cell phones had been thrown in the garbage and were broken. They end up into the whatever dumpster, you know, garbage truck. And they actually, if they hit something correctly, they spark off a fire, and they actually have to dump everything on the road. And they've had two of those in the last, I can't remember what he said, but year for sure. And all around the cities it's happening. They have to actually dump the whole load because it's, you know, starting to combust in there. And so I think, you know, and we had our governmental type, you know, policymaking thing here for legislators this morning, that the battery thing, I don't know what needs to be done, but you know, if you go to get a car battery or a lawnmower battery, if there's a $10 little thing you have to pay for, these, you could probably make a heck of a case that they're probably 10 times worse sitting around somewhere and wherever, that somehow or another this, they have to be recycled. And every year alone, there's over 100 million of these sold, these batteries just for cell phones in this country. So that's not including drills or pen lights or anything that's rechargeable. Computers, I mean, look around, they're everywhere. So anyhow, that's all I want to say.
Well, don't lose it. Let's continue that.
Yes.
Good comment. Thank you. Commissioner Brennan, any highlights?
I attended the Minnesota Association of Workforce Board Conference, and the conversation was regarding innovation. And there was a lot of talk about the new CHIPS grant that's out there for, for semiconductors. And then how to get young people back to work and the issues with that. So it was a good conference. So I appreciated that. Carrie was with me and we had a good conversation about things. And I think that's the highlight that I wanted to share today.
Thank you. Commissioner Beer.
One highlight, boy, that's tough.
Well, it can be just highlights.
Well, I mean, it was, it was a cheapy weekend. Got my grandson out there. It was a lot of fun. Had the SMSC quarterly, which I really enjoyed that meeting. But what I want to talk about is canvassing board, because if you may have heard, it's election season. Some of us know more than others. I sat on the canvassing board for the primary. And the reason I want to bring that up is I think I might be also on the canvassing board for the general. And I think it's important for people to know that we do hand count. Julie's gonna, I think it is three. It's two or three. And I've actually been, precincts, for anyone tens and tens of viewers, we hand count two to three precincts, and that's all open to the public. All of the early voting has been open to the public. The canvassing board earlier is open to the public. So when they do that, people can come and observe like in person. It's not COVID, so you can be closer and that. So that, I have been the one that has picked out three random precincts that got hand recounted. So I just think it's important to, like, we really keep that under lock and key. The audit trail, I know there's out there questions because it's a computerized system, but doesn't hit the internet until it matches up with the data record. So there's some audit trails that are super specific. I have my, I'm a healthy skeptic on all kinds of things, but feel like we have this locked down, at least in our fair counties. So that's just want to point that out.
Thank you. And probably we should continue to point that out as, as the season goes on. So I appreciate that. Commissioner Ulrich?
Yeah.
Any number of highlights you want to?
I have one that I will highlight. FISH has got something new that's going to become live here in short, future, about a month or so. It's called FISH Market. It's where you can post something that you want to donate, and you get a donation slip back, and then someone that's in need can say, we would like that and want that. And then they arrange the exchange of the item, whether it's at a private or public location. But there's now this FISH market. It's kind of similar to Facebook Marketplace, only it's donation-based, and that's it.
Thank you. That'll be great to see how that goes. Two highlights, and of course, I know you all, we've done a lot the last two weeks, and that'll be fully noted in the minutes of your full reports. Just gonna, two things. On August 7th, Representative Angie Craig visited Scott County. Commissioner Beer was also there. She visited the RTF to look at the shooting range because one of our congressionally-directed appropriations, formerly called earmarks, requests this year was on improving, getting the new equipment, infrastructure to collect the lead. It would save a lot of money. It would save a lot of time. And that has been forwarded. So we'll hopefully, you know, hopefully continue to get that into the appropriations bill. But I was really impressed, we had representatives from law enforcement and some fire, but from every, every city in the county and the county sheriffs. And it was a good conversation opportunity to just talk about law enforcement trends in Scott County, crime trends, you know, things going quite well. But also nice for her to hear that, but also for those, those folks to be sharing that information together. So that's one highlight. The other thing I'll just bring up is yesterday, I testified at Minnesota Campaign Finance Board on that lobbying bill that got passed last year that really doesn't affect us, like us going out as lobbyists. But I do think it really affects our citizens, our taxpayers, our businesses, because for a lot of what they do, and just even getting a conditional use permit, now they would legally, according to that statute, have to register as lobbyists, do reports. And I don't think that general citizens doing their general business with government should have to do that. We hear every day about how government makes things, you know, bureaucracy and hoops and more expensive. So testified about how that just doesn't make sense on a local level, especially when we have frankly, many more required transparency acts and rules than legislature does with open meeting law and things like that. So just wanted to flag that, that that conversation is still going on. The Campaign Finance Board admittedly said they don't know much about local government. I think more than one member said that at a time and staff. And I think we need to continue to, to educate them about what that means for just our general taxpayers instead of adding another layer. So thank you for that. And $3,000 or 50 hours in a month.
50 hours?
Well, I highlighted, yeah, all our townships have contracted staff that by law would have to register as lobbyists and do reports, which seems silly for engineers and hydrologists. Thanks. County Administrator update?
So just quickly, there's nothing next Tuesday, the 27th. It's the Choose Not to Use Golf Tournament where the county attorney and sheriff and the board raise dollars for drug prevention and gateway drug prevention. So that's a big deal for folks to support. So our next meeting will be the day after Labor Day. The county will be closed on Tuesday, September 2nd, in honor of Labor Day. But you have a full board meeting then on the 3rd.
Thank you for that. Is there any reason to do a recess for attorney-client meeting?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, there is not.
Thank you very much. There's no further business. After we adjourn, we'll meet in a workshop setting for a quarterly ERP update, for our budget workshop on children's services, and for a Commissioner round robin. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
So I'm moved and seconded to adjourn. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carried. The meeting's adjourned. Thank you.